Okay, it's time to bring the March 10th, 2020, meeting of the Concord Planning Board to order. So for tonight, our first point of business is recommendation to the zoning board of appeals, which is an application of Andrew Bonzangi. Bonzangi?
Bonzani.
Bonzani, thank you, Bonzani, for a special permit and site plan review under sections 4.2.3, 11-6 and 11-8 of the zoning bylaw for relief from required open space for the construction of two residential apartments at 113 and 115 Commonwealth Avenue. So, representing the applicant?
I'll be here.
Okay, you can step right up or however you prefer.
So, this, for those who aren't familiar with it, there's two retail spaces on the first floor, Combed Outfitters and Three Stones Gallery. And the building was replaced in 2013. There was a trailer there and some apartments upstairs. The building was offset from Commonwealth Ave. by about 13 feet. We demolished the building, replaced it with the current structure, and we're at about a zero lot line for the park, the parking requirements, the retail square footage downstairs, and currently it's open for storage space on the second floor. The bylaw is to have matching green space for the apartments that we're trying to put upstairs. We wanted to have a mixed-use building so that there'd be activity downtown in Concord after hours with two apartments upstairs and, but we just can't meet that requirement because parking lots don't qualify. And what we're proposing is, what I'm proposing is, you know, if we could build the apartments with the access to the rail trail, Warner's Pond and Rideout Park with, all within walking distance. Having that qualifies the green space component for the project.
Okay.
Yeah, what?
Yeah, so, yeah, so, let's see.
What section is it under? 423? That's what describes the, the open space requirement?
Yeah.
4233 is the open space requirement?
Yeah.
We all should have received my report for the project.
And, yeah, and I recall too, that, I mean, there've been a number of discussions. I mean, first of all, I should say that when the West Concord Advisory Committee's been evaluating other building proposals in the district, this building is used as the paragon for what a building should be like. It's very consistent. The second thing is, I know that the, and again, mixed use is something we've been trying to encourage in the Village Business District. And we, I think, always hoped that there would be apartments placed to overhear this building. But that, I think there had been a number of hurdles to jump over. The first one was initially, there was an affordable housing requirement that was amended in our bylaws, so that no longer was an impediment. I thought we actually, at least, had considered doing something about reducing open space requirements. Yeah, we'll get to public comment in a minute. But that, Elizabeth, do you recall what we did? Because I thought we did.
Yeah, you allowed the provision for a waiver.
Okay, so it was really just what we're here for now. We didn't, I thought we'd actually, in the district, even eliminated the requirement. But, so, you know, again, when you're in town like this, having open space provided is always a challenge. And indeed, there are other resources available. So, as a practical matter, I think it makes sense to support such an application. But any comments from the board?
Is there anything else that you can do to support in the nearby open spaces that you referenced that you, you sort of feel as if you were connected to?
I'm not sure I understand how so. I mean, we're, we're within walking distance to those. We're trying to have a mixed-use facility in downtown that West Concord Advisory Board wanted, you know, when we developed the project originally. It's, it's just a tough component to meet when you're trying to meet parking requirements, have the building, the property sized so it's affordable for tenants, and then also have green space in the downtown, you know, area of West Concord. It's like, trying to meet those three components is, is pretty difficult. And that's why the way it's set up right now, we're just looking for that waiver to allow people to have access to, obviously, the rail trail. And that's where we're looking to access the green space or have tenants access the green space to meet that requirement.
Other comments?
What about anything on the roof?
The, the only way up on the roof is just a utility ladder that is in the center of the apartment right now, like the, the access point to the second floor. So, then, then there is certainly railings that have to be provided. There's a safety issue at that point. And so I don't know if that is feasible for the project. Have a roof deck. Then there's just a different set of liabilities for tenants. And there's just a ladder up there. There's definitely not room for a stairway to get anyone up. And I think that's, that would be another issue.
Just so I'm clear, so this is just simply about relief from the parking piece?
No, not about the parking.
Or sorry, open space. But then would this come back around whenever there's a development, like the actual?
No. So, once the, I mean, once the zoning board, presumably if they accept our recommendation, and it's a positive one, if they would approve this relief, then he could change the use effectively from storage to apartments because the parking requirements are the same. So I think it would just be a building permit. Yeah, so. Okay, if we don't have any other questions or comments from the board, I'd open it up to the public. Any comments or questions? Yes?
Hi, Gary Kleiman, 57 Central Street. A former member of the planning board, and I actually was the one who argued for this on the floor of town meeting last year, this provision, to allow the open space requirement to be waived by special permit, specifically because it was consistent with the long-range plan, the West Concord master plan, and the West Concord Task Force recommendations before that, to encourage, as the applicant has suggested, pedestrian-friendly residential mixed-use development in the village centers. What I don't remember, and maybe Elizabeth knows, is whether we allowed this use to be waived by special permit only in the Village District or whether it's throughout the entire Business District. But I think we did try to be very strategic and targeted in allowing this waiver because we recognized that the Village District and/or the Business District was in proximity to Rideout, to Warner's Pond, to these other natural resources. And now, assuming the Jarrow property, we thought that it would be okay, given the other development goals. So, I'm in support of this, and obviously, I argued in favor of it this assumption last year.
Okay, any other comments? I don't know, Jeff, you wanted to comment on behalf of the?
Yeah, Jeff Walton, West Concord Advisory Committee. We reviewed this last, in our last meeting last week, and we were all in support of the waiver.
Okay, great. Well, maybe along your lines, he could offer discounts on fly fishing trips, you know, for additional open space support to tend.
To get you out there, that's for sure.
And so I think we're ready to make a motion. Anybody? Nope, that's a different one. You have to get a little creative here. We don't have Burton tonight. Oh, it's on the, it's on your, your report.
Do you want mine?
Sure. Do the honors.
I move that the planning board recommends to the board of appeals on site plan approval and a special permit for relief from the open space requirements for combined business residential use at?
And waiver, no, waiver the open space?
Relief from the open space requirement?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
At the address?
113 and 115.
113 and 115 Commonwealth Ave.
Perfect, that's all I need.
Okay, and?
Do you have a second? All right, any discussion of this? Okay, all in favor? All right, thank you. It was granted, or it's actually recommended. Now, now it's thanks to the ZVA. Okay, and we coincidentally are at 7:15, which is time for our second agenda item, which is the site plan review and the application of John Gates, 152 Commonwealth Avenue LLC, under section 7734 and 118 of the zoning bylaw to allow 11 double-depth parking spaces at 152 Commonwealth Ave. So, I, before we go into this, I just want to declare that my wife is a tenant of 152 Commonwealth Ave. And would presumably be a user, though I don't think any arrangements have been made yet of these parking spots. So, while there would be a potential conflict of interest, I don't think that it would affect my voting in this particular matter. So I just wanted to be clear. So, could the applicant describe what's going on here?
Sure. When Neshoba moved into the building in 1988, there was double-depth parking along the same area that you see in that slide. So as you're coming from downtown West Concord and you turn into the lot, all the 11 spaces on the right. And it was always parked that way. And when we were put in a position to buy the building, previous owner was selling it last year, and we were able to put together a partnership and successfully purchase the property, one of the first things we wanted to do was to repave the parking lot because it was a mess. It was always full of potholes. It didn't drain properly, and it seemed like a high priority for long-term deferred maintenance. So we repaved it and striped it and didn't realize that we had potentially run afoul of the zoning bylaw for formalizing what has always in practice been double-depth parking. So I came and met with Ray and Elizabeth, and we talked about it. And in fact, what we came to see was that the, the way the zoning law's written, you can have double-depth parking, but only if there's a full-time attendant on the spaces. And so our plan is to make each one of those 11 double-depth spaces, we'll have a sign with, a signpost with two signs on it, one for each space. In almost every case, with a few exceptions, that would be one tenant being assigned two spaces, but there'll still be two signs on the post naming each of those tenants. And the tenants will act as the attendants. They will be responsible to make sure that it's their cars that are parked there or that they're not blocking anybody in. And if someone does block them in, that will be something for them to have to sort out with whomever might have blocked them in. And our, our feeling is, A, we want to formalize it. You know, in talking with Ray and Elizabeth, that would seem like a good idea. And B, it'll bring more sanity to what was, at times, a chaotic situation for the last 22 years now that we've been a tenant there, where people will block each other in, and that has, that has happened in the past. So by, and it can create, at times, a problem. So to have it assigned, each of those spaces to a specific tenant or to two cooperating tenants should dramatically reduce that chaos that exists there. If there were another way to address this, we would have done that. We would have looked at this as an opportunity to create single-space parking in a more traffic-conducive way without that double-depth parking. But it's too narrow a run-through there when we looked at it with parking engineers. I think that's why it's always been parked that way. So, anyway, that's our, that's our application.
So will this involve restriping the lot?
It's been restripped, so it would be?
Already to this dimension?
Correct, so it would mean, if it were turned down, we'd have to take the center stripes out. You'd just have a very long, single, single space. And if it were approved, then we'll put the signs up. So we, we've talked to a local contractor, Crosby Signs, and they're, they're ready to do it.
Would this result in any changes in the number of spaces that has already been associated with the project?
Yes, effectively 11 more.
Okay, because previously, while it was nominally double-depth parking that wasn't on the?
That's correct.
Plan?
That's correct.
And then, did the project have relief from parking requirements in the past?
Not that I know of.
Reducing that relief? No.
It does not require relief from parking.
Based upon the current occupancy?
That and the property, the parking for the property also extends across the Brook.
Sure.
Yeah, there are 51 spaces across the Brook.
And so the grand total of spaces for the property are?
72 by the application, was it? I think I remember that correctly.
Okay.
So, just for my own clarity, the 11 outer spaces, those are, have, have been, actually, for actual tenants? But no, it seems like, you know, anybody parks there.
There were signs along the back of those 11 spaces that said, "tenant parking only."
Yeah.
There were, I think, three of them, sort of spread out across that, the length of that area. And it wasn't particularly effective. I don't think that's only because there were only three signs.
Yeah.
But I think also there's a, a way that people approach the idea of walking into Neshoba Brook Bakery where they assume if there's a parking space up front, they can walk in.
Yeah, I mean, I've parked there a lot, a number of times, but, because I assumed it was the interior ones that were assigned, and I didn't really look at them.
And to be fair, by doing this for our, you know, I have to wear both hats, right? Now, I'm building owner in Neshoba Brook Bakery at the same time. For Neshoba Brook Bakery's sake, actually, it's probably not the most positive thing because now it would be strictly tenants. And they'll be upset if there's retail customers parking there. So we're gonna have to figure out a way to proactively encourage people to know about the Winter Street Lot and how to get there.
Yes.
And we have some ideas about that.
Okay, any other questions?
I just want to say that now that I know about the Winter Street parking lot, I actually prefer it.
Yeah, it's nice, right? You walk across that lovely footbridge and the Brook.
I think other folks could feel that way, too.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, we, a long time ago, I actually hand-drew a little map that showed people how to get around there, and we have the cards still from literally 20 years ago. And we've, at times, put a kind of eight-and-a-half by 11 of that map up on the front door. One of the things that we encountered was often when people drive up to park, they're not, you know, there's no place to put a sign that they're gonna see while they're driving up to park.
Yeah, maybe.
So they park and then they walk in.
Maybe post it at that location where people are trying to find stuff.
Yeah, but if you know what I mean, what ends up happening is they're in their car, and they're not really looking at the signs, they're looking for a parking spot. So it's, but it doesn't mean it doesn't work, because I think what we're doing is training them for their revisit, which we hope happens anyway. So, we'll definitely do that.
Okay, any comments or questions from the public? All right, anybody wanna make a motion?
This proposal was also reviewed by the West Concord Advisory Committee.
Oh, and we had?
Here in support of the project.
Okay, thank you. Here we go, we're gonna give you one. It's a good one to practice on.
I should have, like, the exact words that I said.
Well, I will make sure of those exact words next time.
I move to recommend the site plan approval and relief?
Grant?
It should be grant, your, your?
I told her that was my fault.
But how about if I, if I'll tell you, I believe, the planning board should be moved to approve the requested relief from parking design requirements to allow the double-depth parking spaces at 152 Commonwealth Ave.
Do I need to repeat that?
No, is that what you said?
Oh, yes.
There you go. Perfect, that's all I need.
Second?
Okay, all in favor? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty, so now we're going to move on to administrative business for this evening. And we have Gary Kleiman, who is here to tell us about the work they've been doing in the Nuclear Metals StarMet reuse planning committee.
Pete, thank you. Yeah, so I'll try and keep it quick, but we're at sort of, I guess, not quite a midpoint in our process, but we're at a significant milestone in our process and wanted to share with you an update and, you know, then sort of bring you up to speed on where we're headed with this process so that we can make sure you guys are tuned into this, because I think you will play pivotal, pivotal role throughout. And so, if you want to go to the next slide, I'll just dive right in with an executive summary. Essentially, in case you don't remember, you know, we were charged, the Nuclear Metals Inc. StarMet reuse planning committee was charged by the Board of Selectmen to identify possible ways to reuse the 2229 Main Street site for maximum public benefit should it ever be, and it will be, cleaned up to residential standard in this case, and perhaps, possibly, potentially be taken, ownership taken by the town. At that point, we would need to utilize this. And so the idea is to come up with a plan now that will do two things. It will allow the cleanup to proceed because the contractors that are doing the cleanup can't really do the cleanup until they know how the site will be used post-cleanup. So to do the cleanup, they need to know what the potential uses are. And it will also allow the town a better understanding of how, what they need to do between now and the time when the site is cleaned up and they might want to take ownership. We have gotten as far in our process as to identify sort of a master plan, if you will, you know, a concept at the conceptual level of how the site could be redeveloped. But we still have a number of outstanding issues. And we'll come back to the outstanding issues. I don't need to go over them now in the executive summary slide, but I wanted all of the, you know, real important information to be upfront. So if you want to jump to the next slide, I'll start with a little bit of context, a tale of two timelines. There are two separate committees that are dealing with this site. There's the 2229 Main Street Committee that has been following the cleanup and will continue to follow the cleanup of this site for quite a while. As you can see on this timeline here, back in 2001, that's when the, the site, a 46-acre site, was originally placed on the Superfund National Priority List. You know, we had recognized it was pollution for some time. EPA, you know, reviewed all of the Superfund sites in the, in the country. And in fact, in 2001, this site was identified as in need of cleanup. So for around 10 years, it has been, you know, in need of cleanup. And by 2011, the site was permanently abandoned by the StarMet Corporation. Between 2011 and 2015, there was a series of events that caused EPA to mediate, immediately implement some removals and cleanup actions because they were actually, there was a small fire that broke out, and there were toxic, you know, emissions coming from this fire. It was putting our town personnel at risk, you know, fire first responders and so forth. So EPA immediately had the building demolished and the, you know, all of the material removed from the site. At that time, they also recognized there were immediate groundwater concerns, so they put in a pumping treat facility across Main Street to clean up and started addressing a plume of underground 1-4 dioxin that was leaving the site and heading underneath the Assavet River, heading into Acton's town water supply. So we immediately implemented, or EPA immediately implemented those two cleanups. Back in 2015, finally, there was a record of decision, said, okay, this site needs to be cleaned up. And then 2019, just a couple of months ago, we finally got a consent decree, essentially an agreement by the government and the potentially responsible parties, Textron and Whittaker, who owned the former StarMet and Nuclear Metals Inc., that they would invest $225 million in cleaning up the residual contamination on the site. So we are now in a five-to-seven-year cleanup process that involves a couple of years of designing the remediation. So the remedial design phase is starting now. And that cleanup will go at some point, maybe, potentially, and, you know, I'm looking over my shoulder because I know a member of the select board is here, but we may be asking the town to take ownership even before the cleanup is complete. Maybe not, maybe it can wait until the cleanup is complete. It just makes things easier if we have taken ownership and can be responsible for some of the, part of the remediation. Part of the cleanup will involve actually continuing to monitor the control systems. You know, legal owner acknowledging that, you know, things like a cap that would be put in place to stabilize one area of contamination will not be disturbed, that, you know. So somebody needs to be responsible for making sure that these institutional controls remain in place. But we'll get to that. And then, you know, by 2025, 2026, then it will be time to start implementing redevelopment of the site. So all of that is really more or less this other committee, 2229 Main Street. And down there at the bottom, you see a little short arrow, and that's our committee. Our process all happens between 2019 and 2020. If you want to click one more time, Elizabeth. The second timeline really is what we've done. And we, you know, responding to our charge, we had our first meeting. We immediately came up with some principles that, you know, you can see in later slides. We held a public forum to talk with the town of Concord about some of the potential uses with respect to the long-range plan that identifies, you know, needs for the town that, you know, after all, we're trying to optimize. In the, you know, coming out of that forum, we sort of took that public input and formulated some concepts, which I'll go over. And we met with the select board who notionally approved our concepts, and we want to share that with you now. Finalized a set of design or development scenarios, and I'll show you a little sketch of what those are likely to look like. And hopefully sometime in May, I think we're targeting at this point, a May public workshop or forum where we'll present the public with two or three potential scenarios and get some specific feedback on two or three of these outstanding questions that I showed you on the executive summary slide. And then, you know, over the summer, we need to do some due diligence. And this is consistent with the, the principles that we outlined. You know, make sure that whatever scenarios we are recommending are gonna be meeting multiple objectives, are gonna be, you know, financially viable for the town, figure out the sort of institutional arrangements and partnerships that we would need to implement it, and then, you know, hopefully have a draft report by end of this year. So now we can jump ahead, you know. The concepts that I want to share would be first, you know, what principles did we come up with? The forum results, you know, what potential uses, what did we get from the public? The reused zones and typology, and then the master plan concept. I'll skip through some of this because I think you can just read the slides and, you know, I don't think we need to delve into it. But if you want to jump one more, Elizabeth. The principles, this is all kind of, you know, some nice words. I believe in each one of these principles. I don't think we need to dwell on them now, but they're very consistent with things you've seen before. If you look at our long-range plan, you're gonna see words just like this. If you look at the Climate Action Plan, they're using very similar principles. I mean, these are basically Concord values. So, you know, yes, that is consistent with what we want to do here. Next slide. We did have a very in-depth discussion with the public about a wide range of potential uses and got a lot of valuable feedback about very specific things people would like to see happen. But we also, you know, advanced in our thinking, and at this point, I think, we don't want to get down to this level of detail in what we're calling our master plan concept at this stage. It's really, if you jump ahead, I'll come back to this. If you jump one more, really, this is the level of uses that I think are useful at this stage of the process. Because whether it's a pizza parlor or a barber shop, doesn't really matter from the standpoint of, you know, the cleanup. What we need to know is, is it a market-rate, you know, commercial space? Or is it a municipal use? Or is it a municipal use, like a senior center or, uh, you know, a recreation space that might require town to cross subsidize? You know, that's the level of granularity that we need in thinking about this concept. So, you know, these three buckets of indoor uses and these four buckets of outdoor uses are as detailed as we're going to get at this point, and in terms of the zones, if you go, you don't have to go back, go, go ahead. Here's the master plan concept that we came up with. Essentially, looking at the forty six acres and the variety of zones that were available for redevelopment, or for drainage, or for infrastructure, or for different uses, what we are, are thinking is that to the extent possible, the entire area in green to the right, which includes wetlands and sphagnum bog and, um, you know, also some of the most contaminated areas, B is the holding basin, and that would have probably an eighty foot deep concrete slurry wall isolating off a section of soil deep down, you know, eighty feet down in the ground, that would, there would be some chemical treatments to stabilize any contaminants that remain there, but it would then be capped with concrete and have, you know, a ten foot thick cap, concrete cap, and then ten feet of fresh, clean, perfect soil above it. So that, you know, the exposure at ground level would be at minimum ten feet of, you know, of clean soil away from a ten fi- foot cap, concrete cap that would then, you know, so this is all being cleaned up. The entire forty six acres will be cleaned up to a residential standard. So that means that a person could live, could be born there, live for seventy years, eating the dirt, literally, and have no increased level of risk beyond that of sort of, you know, normal exposures to, you know, radiation and in the normal environment. Uh, no more than a one part and a million increase in risk above that. So, the whole site's going to be cleaned up to a very, very clean level. But the entire right side that you see in green would probably be more or less open space with some trails around it, nature viewing area, that kind of thing. The area marked A one, the blue area in the center, that would have the most intensive development, because that is basically the footprint of the buildings now, it's already, you know, once that's, that contaminated soil is extracted and clean, fill is put back, there's a, it's a great opportunity, representative great opportunity for redevelopment. And then the areas in orange all around the, I guess, eastern, um, half, um, they would present, uh, potential redevelopment opportunities as well. They could be done now, they could be done in the future, so we're still doing some thinking, and there are different scenarios that I'm going to show you now, um, that make different use of that area. But that's basically the master concept, is how we would, you know, potentially use this. And now we're thinking about what types of uses we would want to combine in different ways in the area marked A one and A two, A three, or A four, potentially now or potentially in the future. So, we haven't done any due diligence yet, this is just brainstorming, but three different concepts that the committee's come up with, just for discussion. First one, uh, some members of our committee, uh, like the idea of a multipurpose community space. Uh, it's a rather large structure, it's modeled after one in East Boulder, Colorado. There's a large community, uh, recreation facility that, you know, has a, could have indoor courts, gym, walking track, a community center with, you know, large meeting or event space, artisanal space, uh, you know, for artisans to, you know, have workshops and working space, um, uh, potentially a senior center, could serve as an emergency shelter, could have room for things like, uh, you know, grid storage or solar on the roof. Um, uh, could have a, you know, shovel stop, uh, or something like that for, uh, you know, public transit, uh, and potential redevelopment of areas, um, A two, A three, A four for soccer, baseball fields. In this particular proposal, they've also suggested that A two, uh, that the hill right on Route sixty two at the top left corner there, that that hill be leveled, and all of that fill be used to backfill the area in A one where soil is going to be removed. Next slide. This is very similar, except, um, here, instead of sort of a municipal space, this is focused more on like an office slash medical complex, so this would be more market rate development. So, the features of the first concept would probably require quite a bit of cross subsidization. You know, the town would probably have to, um, either give significant tax relief, or we would probably have to, you know, if there are a lot of municipal uses in there, we would have to find a way to support those municipal uses with user fees, or our tax base, or something like that. Here, this would probably be a big tax boom to the town, if it's all market rate, commercial and medical office, that, you know, we would be increasing the value of the property, uh, with an investment, but that would, you know, then increase the town's taxes. Um, potentially, uh, housing developments, or maybe soccer fields, um, in areas A two, A three, A four. Uh, I think this one was sort of, uh, ambiguous as to what would be the disposition of A two, but you're, they are showing, um, some thirty to forty rental homes. And the last concept, um, would be basically leaving areas A two and A four alone for the present time. So we would need to find a different source for, uh, fill material, but it is right now a lovely wooded hill, uh, that is completely uncontaminated. A four is a lovely wooded area that is completely uncontaminated. A three is a sweeping pile that would need to have some significant remediation. So, the idea would be, if you have uncontaminated areas of the property, let's leave them alone, let sleeping dogs lie. We could always develop them in the future, but that the areas where remediation is taking place, that's where we would start development. And, uh, for the center area, A one, uh, mixed use, that would include a mix of housing, recreation, entertainment, uh, you know, potential municipal uses, potential artisan or cowork spaces. Um, and then in the open space area, leave that for trails and, um, you know, nature viewing and so forth. This does have a transportation hub, a link on the public transit thing at the north end of the, uh, site. Uh, that's that orange loop road, as well as in orange, uh, bus parking, with the concept that there would be a similar bus parking area on Virginia Road, so that, um, as we head towards our two hundred and fiftieth anniversary, and we have tour groups coming to Concord increasingly, folks coming from the west could park here, folks coming from the east could park at Virginia Road, and shuttle service would get them into the town centers. So, I'll stop there, but that is the overview of where we're at, and, uh, yeah, this comes back to the, the areas that we still have to figure out, you know, housing, do we want to do separate, you know, housing in clusters on the outside, A two, A three, A four, um, and then have commercial and real estate in the middle, uh, or commercial, uh, and office type, you know, development in A one? Or do we want to have a mixed use type development? Um, outdoor sports and facilities, what are the number and type of outdoor recreational uses that would benefit the town most? We still haven't really done that kind of due diligence with the rec department. The intensity of development, should we be developing the whole site now? Should we be recommending, you know, more intensive development in A one? And then let sleeping dogs lie elsewhere until we have a clearer idea? And how does this relate to, um, other town developments like Peabody and, um, you know, potentially redevelopment of Kai's Road, or, uh, you know, this building, or, uh, Harvey Wheeler? Um, you know, there's a lot of municipal facilities and shifting and things, and then we'll do due diligence over the summer, figuring out what's the ratio of market rate versus cross subsidize, if that makes sense, or cross anything.
Okay, questions for the board?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. And thank you to the committee. Can you, can you back up a little bit and, um, kind of set the context of, helping understand how the town would make a decision about whether they want to take this on as a development or not? Like, are you anticipating, like, was that sort of assumed, and so we went forward, looking at different options? Or is it, is it, is it the concept that we're going to develop these different ideas, and that's going to help us frame up an argument later to think about whether the town wants to take this on? So I, I guess that's my question, and then like some related questions are, what, um, do we know what will happen to the site if the town does not acquire it? And the other, so, and then to get back to the initial question, it's all these kind of threshold questions about, um, taking on the liability and would it, would, how we would maintain these, um, um, remediation systems in perpetuity, or who would do that, or who would pay for it all? So, this is kind of like this, I don't know if these questions come before this, or after, or both, but I, I just was hoping you could speak to that.
I think before, and they're all related, and I think that the assumption when we were given our charge was more or less that, yes, the town is very likely to want to take ownership of this, but only under very specific circumstances, and play, you know, being a little bit coy with the government, um, uh, the US government as to whether we would take ownership, because we want to make sure that those conditions are met. Um, and it is actually, I think, very much, at the end of the day, will be in our interest to take ownership, because exactly, we will have no liability for future risk, and because we want to ensure that the controls are maintained and operated. We don't want this to become, you know, a worse problem in the future, if somebody fails to maintain those. So, it may, probably makes sense for the town, a responsible entity, to be the ones who are in charge, because we can make sure that we maintain these, you know, the pump and treat systems, for example, and that we know that, you know, you're not going to, you know, pump through the cap and things like that. Um, so, I think there's probably an incentive for the town, but we wanted to make sure that these legal arrangements were worked out. Um, right now, there's like twenty two million dollars of liens on the property. Obviously, the town doesn't want to inherit those liens, so we have to do some due diligence on our own to figure out, and when I say we, I mean more the select board and the town. So, it's not a done deal, it's not a final decision yet, but I think that it's more or less EPA in going as far as they have to, you know, really push hard on the potentially responsible parties in the Department of Energy and the Army to get this two hundred and twenty five million dollars for the cleanup. They were kind of assuming that that's the direction we were going to head, and I think they were looking for the town to express, you know, positive signals in that, and, you know, us forming a committee to figure out this plan is exactly one of those signals we are sending. So, it's a little bit of a dance, but, and a little bit of a negotiation, but yes, I think we are headed down a path where we can get the best possible deal for the town, to get the liens cleared, to get the site cleaned up, so that we would actually not only be comfortable taking ownership, it will be to our advantage to take ownership, because not only will we have a forty six acre site, which is a great, a great opportunity to redevelop for municipal town benefit, but we will have guarantees of, you know, any future liability or risk that, you know, is uncovered in the future, you know, would not be our responsibility, that, that remains with the federal government, and, um, that, you know, we would have the peace of mind to know that we're maintaining the site where it should be.
If, if we don't, thank you, um, if the town doesn't acquire it, is it likely to be purchased by another, or, um, party? Or is it likely to just sort of revert back to nature?
Well, I mean.
With some question marks about what the remediation systems are working or not.
Yeah, I mean, I think, some of those questions are over my pay grade, but I mean, I think that, you know, I don't think it would be, serve the town well at all to have nobody owning it, you know, with these critical systems that need to keep operating. So, um, I, and I'm not sure how comfortable the town would be, and, you know, I don't know if the select board will want to answer that, but I mean, I think what our committee is going to recommend in our report is that it is definitely to the town's interest to make sure that we have a stable owner of that. I would not be as comfortable with a private entity taking ownership, nor do I think, there are many private entities that want to take ownership of this site unless they were getting it, you know, free of the twenty two million dollars of liens against it. So, you know, they would have to do some of the groundwork that the town is doing to figure out if we can get those liens forgiven. It's going to, you know, banks and things like that, and saying, I know some, you know, this bankrupt company owns, owes you nine million dollars, but will you forgive that loan for me? I'm not sure that Citizen Bank is going to let them, just walk in and.
I have one, more quick, quick, quick.
Sure, go ahead.
Um, in all three scenarios, that the green part, which had the frog and the bird, um, are those left undeveloped because of the extent of wetlands? Or because, um, there'll be like a coven, um, restriction on them?
Well, it's mostly because, you know, that, this is a good one to show, because you see the striped areas, those are wetlands, so you can't develop those anyway. Um, area D.
Like the entire area?
What?
The entire area, you're saying all of C one and C two is?
No, I'm saying that the striped area inside C one.
I get that, yeah.
That's wetland, so you absolutely couldn't develop, you know, the wetlands.
Got it, okay, how about the rest of it?
Right, so, you could, if you look at the gradients, you'll see that is super steep. Yeah, yeah, you look at those gradients, it would be really difficult to develop anything anywhere that Elizabeth is scrolling right now.
Okay.
There's a little plateau in the upper right corner of C one, and upper left corner of C one. You could potentially stick a house or two in there, but essentially, the land doesn't have a lot of development value, and it is a beautiful wetlands, you know, it is a beautiful habitat right now, and so it's sort of ideal for nature viewing, you know, bird watching, stuff like that. Now, in terms of contamination, the area D, there has to be some remediation in that D area, because that's where, uh, everything from the holding basin drained out of, um, and so there's some sludge that will have to be removed, and a tiny corner of that, um, sphagnum bog has to be remediated, but then after that, because of the nature of the drainage patterns, that probably will be used, area D will be used to drain the site. If you develop, you know, you need some flood storage, and that's probably going to remain, you know, flood storage. So, may as well just let that revert to nature.
Okay, can I just, um, can you orient me on this map here? What's the white, is that a road?
Yep, that's Route sixty two.
Route sixty two.
That's sixty two, where are the train tracks?
Well, this isn't West Concord, this is further out towards the Maynard border.
Um. Over, over here is the Acton Town Line, roughly.
Yeah, so you know, south or, south of.
Yeah. So the train tracks will be way up here.
This is Forest, Forest Hill Road, Forest.
Way over there.
Okay, because on Google Maps, it just showed it like going right through it, so that's why I was confused.
Well, that's the, that's, that's a different superfund site, so the Grace superfund site is across sixty two.
Is it Manor?
Yeah.
I didn't know that, okay.
Yeah, we've, we've got our share of superfunds.
Oh, I see.
That's in, that's actually in Acton, or mostly in Acton.
It's by that, oh, interesting.
Yeah.
Got it.
Yeah, I have a question, does it matter what kind of development goes for the cleaning purposes? Or is there, for example, if it's residential, it has to go to this kind of level of cleaning versus?
Yeah, but the decision's already been made to do it to a residential standard.
So now, no matter what we choose to do with this site, they have to clean it up to a residential standard.
I see.
And so, honestly, I think EPA and the government might be a little disappointed with us if we decide we're going to, you know, just put
Commercial.
Commercial office building here, because they've gone to a lot of extra effort to clean this site to the level where we could.
The tax dollars at work, yeah.
But, we don't have to.
Yeah, but in that sense, it doesn't matter that, what we do with the master plan now, right? I mean, for the cleaning, for the cleaning purpose.
Well. But there is, what, it does matter in terms of, for example, what you see here, the A two section, that the, the federal government would actually take care of removing that whole berm of A two
I see, if, if it's going to be done, yeah, yeah.
if, if we want to do that, so that's the kind of decisions that we can make now. Um, and I think they would also install a road, right?
Yep.
Yeah, they, they put in a road, so, you know, that, that already kind of helps decide what we have to do.
Or at least they would, you know, prepare it for, they may not do the actual cleaning,
The grading, they make do the grading.
but they would at least do the, yeah, the grading and leave it, you know, you know.
Yeah.
I don't know, I mean, it's, they have two hundred and twenty five million dollars to spend, and, you know, depending on.
It's a lot of money.
Well.
But a lot of it is probably the hard part, then, yeah, the concrete.
Yeah, you don't know what's going on under B, it's going to cost a lot.
Yeah. But, um, what is the experience with other superfund sites that have been, uh, remediated to a residential standard? I mean, I assume that there is still this lingering fear, uncertainty and doubt, regardless of whether it's irrational. Does it affect the, you know, the development of these sites, or have, have, is there, are there success stories around that?
There are, and there are not that many, um.
That have been done to this level of standard.
That have been done this way, a lot of them get reused in different ways.
Yeah.
But, um, there are a few, and, you know, they didn't have the same type of contamination. Every superfund site is.
There's unique.
So, you know, this is unique. But, um, one of the recommendations that we have already given to the select board, and it's not so much for the planning board, but for the select board, is, you know, we do think there's a risk communication element to moving forward with a site redevelopment.
Yeah.
We're going to have to, it's going to be challenging, we'll have to work probably with.
Sure, but one of the things would be perhaps to point out success stories around, you know, sites that have done that. Then, the second thing I've wondered about with this concept three versus the other two is there's a real attractive, uh, element of incremental development, you know? On the other hand, the opportunity of having, uh, the federal government prepare the other aspect of the site if we were to eventually develop it is interesting. And I just wonder what would be the cost to us of taking the incremental approach? In other words, we do this, that we have them just to do this, okay? And then later on, we say, we want to develop A two and A four, let's say for municipal purposes. What would be the additional cost of doing that, rather than letting them do that now? What would be the additional cost of doing that rather than letting them do that now?
You can ask those questions, I mean.
Cuz I mean, I, I think the presumption is it's significant, and that's why we'd wanna.
Right, and, and part of the decision.
Uh, yeah, I don't know.
Right, I'm just saying, uh, another part of the decision though is, do we want to eventually develop A two and A four? Or do we, you know, as we have suggested, right?
Leave it natural.
You know, landscape resilience, having, you know.
Oh, absolutely.
More pervious surfaces probably, you know, one of the considerations goes into this. And that's why if you look at the development proposed here in A one, it's much more intense than, you know, it's almost equivalent to all of the development that's being proposed in the other two concepts, including A two, A three. So, I mean, here we're talking about a four-story tower
Yeah.
versus the others were, you know, not, so.
Yeah, well, the A two, the.
I, you know. And there's a new study out in Nature last week just showing that, you know, density, you know, compact development actually is limiting.
Yeah. Yeah, but A two is really a dilemma, because, you know, from the, from a landscape resiliency standpoint, you wanna leave it. And especially because it does provide kind of a natural visual barrier, um, to the development on the site.
Yeah.
And, and it is beautiful, actually, as it stands today. The, the part that makes it into a dilemma is they're gonna have to haul all this soil off-site and refill
Six thousand dump trucks.
and instead of just pushing it down right here. And so from a global, a climate impact, it's actually much worse to just leave that hill as it is.
And.
You know, and it's, it's one of these where either way, we have, you know, environmental impacts.
Well. And one of the things they've suggested is they could remove just half the hill or something like that. I don't think that even if they level the hill, I'm not sure that there's enough fill.
No, but it, he said that it made a huge difference, I don't know how many dump trucks he said it was, six thousand, yeah.
Yeah, it's. Six thousand. Six thousand dump trucks off-site and another six thousand that.
Yeah, and we just had that whole debate on fourteen forty about the, you know.
So what happens with the rest of the hill that's off the property site? They just have a giant retaining wall, like what?
Yeah, I mean, it was.
Yeah, or just have it sloped in.
Yeah.
Um, but let me also, just one other question that I had while I've got the floor. Uh, that I see, I've seen the concept one in particular, but all of them seem to indicate kind of recreational uses. And I don't know, I was just at the finance committee public hearing last night, and there are already, you know, are these, all these recreational projects on the docket, right? So Jarrow, uh, and, uh, White Pond, and then they're doing some stuff at Rideout, and they're doing some stuff at Emerson. And, you know, I mean, I, I love to have all these playgrounds and stuff, but from a, yeah, from a fiscal standpoint,
Yeah. Fiscal sustainability. So if you jump out, if you slide.
We're just building out all these capital projects of recreation, and there are private recreational facilities of the sort, like in the immediate vicinity. So I just think, well, maybe a better use would be, we know we have, uh, municipal facilities that need redevelopment. And it, there are just so much better opportunity of having a greenfield site, develop a new facility there, free up an existing site, either sell it or now tear that down and replace it with a new facility and so on. Rather than try to, in, on the same site, redevelop a property is just so much more complex. And so this is just such a great opportunity to have a greenfield site that could be used for kind of creating that domino effect of, okay, let's, let's redevelop one municipal facility, then let's move on, free one site up and do the next one and so on. And so I just, I don't see that emphasized very much in these proposals, but I do think it's the biggest potential opportunity, and it's one that doesn't create, it, it creates more financial opportunity for us rather than more financial cost as some of these other do, others do. Cuz the town budget's under stress.
I was gonna ask, so under this and the other that have the mixed use and the housing, uh, developments, so maybe I didn't hear it, but, so what is the plan? That the town takes ownership of the land and that the development of the housing and, uh, whatever the mixed use ends up being for are owned privately? Or is the town the owner and leasing those out? How, how, what's the intended use and ownership relationship there?
So, sorry, then.
So some of them, you have housing that would potentially go on, who would be the owner and developer of the housing, is that?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I mean, so I don't think we've determined that yet, I think, you know, it's mostly in response to the long range plan and, you know, uh, housing committee input that we need more affordable housing, and that can take the form of either SHI housing or workforce housing, market rate. And so I think the due diligence that we wanna do over the summer would be to try and address both your question and Matt's question, which is, you know, what is the degree of cross-subsidization, what is the impact on our budget? Because fiscal sustainability is one of our core principles for the redevelopment, so we'll have to figure out, like, would we be looking to develop all of the housing as market rate, all of it as affordable or fifty-fifty mix? Would we be looking to develop the, the, you know, commercial office municipal space as, you know, a fifty-fifty split of cross-subsidized municipal space that, you know, would not be generating tax revenue, but might provide us the opportunity for swing space as we, you know, reconstruct municipal facilities? Or would we be looking to develop, you know, it as office or medical complex that would bring in, you know, tax base? Or a fifty-fifty split, you know, so those are exactly.
But a warm, mundane answer to Nathan's question, I think, is if you take a look at Junction Village, for example, it's a long-term lease, it's like a seventy-five-year lease.
Yeah.
Okay, so you can, you can structure things so that the town owns the property, yet it's leased to a private entity if need be.
I see, yeah, yeah, the institutional ring.
Yeah.
Again, you know, the due diligence, that's what we're gonna be thinking through over the summer.
Yeah.
First, you know, we wanna sort of think through just sort of the, and then we'll try and put together these plans, build out these plans. Again, not to the final uses or, you know, but at that level, some recommendations of ways to finance them, ways to, you know, consider cross-subsidization and things like that, and then, you know, that's probably where we'll leave it. And then the town, you know, an ultimate development plan will probably come when the site's cleaned up. But we probably.
I think what you said, like, looking at, uh, some precedence of success stories would be very helpful. This is such a unique, uh, type of, uh, development, and so it's very difficult to see, to think, even to start thinking about it, of what could make sense or not.
The examples aren't really perfect analogies, but, you know, there's like, you know, Devon's was, you know, redeveloped.
Right. Right.
But that didn't have the same type of contamination we have here, but, you know, like those kinds of things were like, you know, public-private partnership, government, you know, sponsored cleanups and, and redevelopments, but.
But even like if people want to live, even if it's like hundred percent clean, but like psychologically might not, commercially might not be viable, I, I don't know, I mean, there could be issues like that, that could be interesting to look at.
Why aren't there more examples? I mean, why aren't there more perfect examples? I mean, isn't superfunds been around for years?
Yeah, but I think a lot of the contaminated sites are out in the middle of nowhere.
Yeah.
This one happened to have been.
How can that be?
Well.
I'm, I'm, I just, I don't know.
I mean, there's Love Canal, I mean, that's a great example.
Gary, there's more out there than we.
Yeah, well, we've been looking for them.
So you have, just like within how far, like.
Yeah. The committee has been looking for examples of superfund.
Like all across country? All across the country?
Redevelopments like this.
Do you want me to look, do you want me to Google it? Did you, have, did you look all across the country or?
I have not done this looking, but Paul Bohm, who is our vice chair, he's the one who's been looking, and he keeps telling me there aren't perfect analogies. And he probably has looked all across the country.
Okay.
But I'll, you know, I'll definitely make sure that, and he has come up with a couple of examples, and I think we're on next Friday, we'll have our next committee meeting, we'll talk.
I mean, the two, two possibilities are, one is that they're more remote, and two, that they're maybe in more suburban locations like this, but they weren't brought up to a residential standard. And so therefore, the kinds of uses that there were available just aren't analogous to what's being proposed here.
But I think even more like details on that Boulder, I don't know, senior place could be useful. I don't know if that was a superfund site or not, but just like how it got developed and financed.
Well. Yeah.
Yeah.
So in terms of the negotiations with the federal government, is it beneficial for the town to have developments that do show more for like affordable housing options and things like that? In terms of, rather than saying, oh, we're gonna take it over and we're gonna put a, a medical facility here? Or an office?
I'm not sure the federal government cares so much, other than, you know, they've invested a lot to clean it up to a residential standard, so if we don't put residential there, but.
Well, yes, that, yeah, that part.
But I think they do, I, I think their interest is just in making sure the institutional controls are maintained. That, you know, somebody's gonna keep operating this system.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, you know, what, part of what we play into it is just how much of affordable housing is the town interested in creating over this next ten-year period or so when this would be coming up?
But as I said.
And that's actually something that's in, you know, also under our responsibility in part.
But the main reason for coming before you tonight is, I mean, I wanna prime you guys for this May event, you know, in May, I hope you'll all be able to come, we'll have a public forum, we'll have, hopefully we'll have better visualizations for our concept. Hopefully, we will be able to have more of the examples of other types of superfund site redevelopments. Hopefully, we'll be able to answer some of these questions you've raised in a more comprehensive way. And, you know, really, if you guys can put your thinking caps on between now and May and come ready to give, you know, more critical input, how it would be, right?
Now, I know there had been an opportunity for the public to join the committee in actually a site walk. Will there be future opportunities of that sort?
That's, that's what we're hoping, may, we haven't worked out.
I think it would really help tremendously to.
But yeah, in May, we're hoping to do a combined, you know, a public forum and then maybe have like a site walk at the end or start with this, I don't know.
Yeah.
You can wa, you can, you can go on a site?
Yes.
No, I mean.
Well, I mean, not, not just on your own, but supervised.
No, I know, I mean, a per, a, a person.
Yeah, I've been on a site walk, I've heard of it, so.
Yeah, yeah, supervised. You turn off the lights, it'll glow a little bit.
I mean, for me, I don't.
It's what we've discussed, but.
I don't have more questions, but I just would say to, you know, whoever is behind option B, um, I mean, I personally think that that would be the most poor use of the site, so if, as their, whoever wants is gonna.
We can answer two, two.
Concept two?
Concept.
The, the, not the one.
Back one. Let, office medical complex?
Yeah, the office medical complex, I mean, um, I don't know, I just, other than purely financial reasons, like, uh, would be curious to hear more compelling reasons for why we would like.
Well, and it's more or less just arranged, right, you know?
Yeah.
Concept one would cost the town a lot of money.
Yeah.
Concept two would bring in the town a lot of money.
Sure.
And concept three would be a mix.
I guess, like, I see a whole, I mean, my, my personal perspective is like a lot of vacancy in existing medical complexes that we do have, so, um, I don't know, I just have, not, I wouldn't be sold at all on, on this concept, again, other than purely for financial reasons.
Is there any opportunity sort of earlier on to make the conservation land aspects available? Even before the other development takes place? I mean, one of the things that I've been disappointed about, for example, at the Junction Village site, and partly maybe because I live nearby, is that while there is an open space plan, it's not gonna be executed until the development is there. So that meanwhile, it just sits as a vacant property. Um, you know, and I don't know what's going on here.
So the trails actually do connect right to, um, existing town trails, we have, um, town property.
Is that open now or is it fenced off, or what's going on?
Right, it's fenced off now because it is a superfund site, and public is not allowed on it.
I see. Yeah. Right.
So until the remediation is complete, I don't think that's going to be able.
So it wouldn't be until almost when the development would occur.
But to answer your question, the development starts when the site is cleaned up. And almost immediately, I think we could, you know, as soon as the fence is taken down, once the cleanup is done,
Yeah, looks accessible.
those trails, but, you know, tie directly into existing trail network that's heavily around in Brooklyn, right?
Yeah, it's a great network back there, and that will make it even better.
But the development would probably still take another four or five years, so, yeah, I think there's potential to.
Okay. Yeah. I'd just like to see that kind of sequencing, yeah. Okay, um, I think we should open to the public unless there are more questions from the board. Any comments or questions for the public on this? Yes, sir.
Since I'm here.
Yeah, you can identify yourself.
John Gates, and, um, I used to actually work as an environmental advocate when I first, uh, got through law school. So I have some familiarity, and one thing I would encourage you guys is there's actually literature around what are colloquially called brownfields.
Yeah.
Which are circula superfund sites that have been redeveloped. They're not always circula sites, sometimes they're actually just unused urban properties. But there's quite a bit, if you Google it, that you'll, you'll find a lot on that, and then.
Yeah. Brownfield development.
Brownfields. Um, the other question I was just curious about, um, what if the federal government doesn't spend all two-hundred-and-twenty-some million dollars? Is there a portion of unspent funds that could be set up, this sort of a trust fund for the site to help take care of the expenses of running some of these ongoing remediation problems?
It's a good question, I don't know myself, but, um, I think that, you know, the, the value was based upon what they anticipated it would cost, but I don't know what happens with any balance of funds. I do think that there is potential for some other funding to become available to the potential future owner, which might be another reason why we would want to. And I forget what it was for, but, um, I know we mentioned it to the select board room, like Paul is, you know, Paul has been on the two-two-two-nine Main Street Committee, so he's been following the site for much longer and is more familiar with the superfund aspects of it. Um, and, uh, he was telling me that there are some funds that might become available outside of the cleanup funds. Um, so there may be some potential for more money for the town, but I don't know, answer to your question.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Um, Susan Bates, Concord Green, I'm a member of the select board. I wanted to thank Gary and his, um, committee as well, because there's clearly been a lot of work done here. And the questions that you're bringing up are similar to the questions the select board has, liability, what do you put on the site? And those are to be determined, but that will be part of our, um, near-future discussions.
And so in response to some of the questions we got from the select board, we did put together some recommendations of questions that they should be pursuing with town council, for example, about how to clear the liens and, and, you know, clarifying some things about liability and stuff like that. So trying to help them move forward and then when the final report lays out recommendations, hopefully we will answer some of that.
Can you go back to the first timeline, the very first timeline?
Cleanup timeline.
Yeah. Cuz you had mentioned this one possibility of the that parking area, like during the two-twenty, two-hundred-fiftieth celebration, but, you know, that's in two-thousand-and-twenty-five, so the cleanup might still be in process, but you think it's you think it's still possible?
Probably not for the two-hundred-fiftieth, it's.
Yeah, it's just a wonder.
I, I mean, actually, I do think that the.
I mean, it's a great site for that kind of thing, but.
So the, the cleanup is in two parts, right? The remedial design.
Yeah.
And then the remediation. And I actually think these guys are on top of it, they already know most of what they need to. I think the remedial design will go much quicker than two, three years. So they might have the cleanup designed in eighteen months. And then they can begin the cleanup. But, you know, bus parking comes after we start developing.
Yeah, that's where I wonder, so I just wondered why you raised that, cuz it, I don't think it actually works.
Yeah, cuz I wasn't thinking.
Okay. Um, all right, then I think we're.
I mean, I think, I think the theory is that Concord will remain a tourist destination even after the two-hundred-and-fifty.
It's true. Um, okay, let's move on to our next item, which is the twenty-twenty annual town meeting public hearing follow-up. Um, and our warrant article board recommendations. So this is, uh, good discussion for tonight. So we had the, um, our town meeting public hearing on February twenty-fifth. Uh, we presented our warrant articles. And, um, I think we got some good feedback from the public. So I think a couple things that we should consider are, first of all, are there any amendments that we wanna make to our articles? Um, and then any kind of changes to presentation or anything like that? So I guess, uh, we could probably go in sequence. The one thing that might help is if you saw the, the minutes, um, from February twenty-fifth. You know, they include, uh, the feedback that we got. And so I would just, you know, entertain any discussion that people wanna have around each of these. So let me just start with Article thirty-two. The accessory dwelling unit. So Burton presented this, unfortunately Burton is not here tonight. But I did not see anything that came up in the feedback that would lead me to think that, uh, we need to, uh, make any amendments. To, to anybody else?
Matt, can I ask?
Sure.
Do we know, when do we know whether something's on the consent calendar or not?
Do we know, when do we know whether something's on the consent calendar or not, or do we already know?
We do not know, and we will not know until slightly before town meeting, whether it's desired to put on the consent calendar. And then even if it does go on the consent calendar, someone at the beginning of town meeting could ask to pull it off. So we always have to be ready in case with anything. Also, I would say, I was surprised that virtually every one of these things got some feedback. I think prohibited uses might go on the consent cal, my guess. prohibited uses might go on the consent calendar, uh, and what else? Hammerhead lot.
Hammerhead lot.
Hammerhead lot. I think that hammerhead lot could, could go. Well, that frees you up, maybe you can, yeah, you know. Well, I know that we, we may, you may have some stuff to see on Article forty-three. So, um, so back to that, then Article thirty-four. I guess for each of these, right, we want to now also take a position?
If you, if you.
We could wait, we don't have to take it tonight.
You do not have to do it tonight.
Right, but, uh, I also don't see any reason why we wouldn't, for, for example, for some of these.
It's an, it's entirely up to you, so if you want to, um, start with accessory dwelling,
Yeah.
you posed the question if, you know, didn't think there was any amendments that needed to be done to the article or to the presentation based on the public hearing.
That's what I noticed.
Everybody is, you know.
There was feedback?
There's a consensus to the board, that'd be great.
The feedback had great answers, I thought, uh, and that the presentation actually anticipated, so, um, so. So I think that we want to make a motion to, um.
So the, um, the, your motions to town meeting, it's either the board recommends affirmative action on the warrant, or, um, no action.
Right, or we just don't take a position.
Or.
But for our own articles, we probably should.
For your own, you, you probably should. You are required to take a position, make a recommendation to the town meeting for all the, um, related articles, whether it's an article or not.
Yeah.
So, um, the third option, um, which has happened is, um, sometimes if there's, you know, a lot of issues or concerns raised at the public hearing, and, you know, the board doesn't feel that they're ready, the third option is for the board to actually pull and not move the, move the article.
Just don't make a motion, right, right.
But your recommendation required by law to town meetings, whether you recommend affirmative action.
But once again, once it's on the work, someone else could ask to move the article. So even if we decided not to. Okay, so, um, does anyone want to make a motion on this one? Maybe I'll make the first one. I moved that we recommend affirmative action on Article thirty-four.
As written in the warrant?
As written, as written in the warrant. Any discussion? All right, all in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Uh, the second one, Article thirty-five, about two families. And, uh, that one, Nathan, you presented, what did you think?
We got some of the same questions that we had in our forum.
Yeah.
Was the first thing, and and why is that the? The only, the one that I think would probably, or, or, you know, came up in the forum, came up there, and will certainly come up again, uh, in town meeting, is the parking aspect and.
Driveways.
Driveways, and, yeah, and so, but, you know, I, I think that we could probably build in something to the presentation to address that, you know, more directly address that as being part of the special permit process.
You know, changes to the, to the article, but.
Oh, we can't, even to the presentation.
But, oh, no, changes to the, changes to the presentation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, no, the board can, the board can make changes to the articles.
As well, if we felt that we needed to.
Yeah.
And, and I'll get to one of those in a minute, perhaps, but, um.
Yeah, I don't think we need to make any changes to the, to the amendment itself, but for the purpose of the presentation, I think.
Okay, and, and maybe to clarify the, the driveways and, and parking. Now, I think one trick that I've found for town meeting in cases like this is because the moderator will never give you enough time to actually go through all the stuff in a complex one of these, is that I often have additional backup slides. So I make the core presentation, and then if a question comes from the public, I can pull up something and address that issue. And, uh, that's worked well in the past, I mean, you know, um, it, it, it's just that you can't always anticipate all the questions, and sometimes the questions don't come up, so why spend all the time, you know, presenting everything, so, um, that's just a possibility for something like this.
I wasn't going to add much, I was just thinking, because we can just make a blurb about, you know, there are aspects that are part of the special permit process, such as.
And I, I think you were pretty efficient on time, too, so you might not have a time problem.
I think if, if a question came up at the forum and at the public hearing.
It should be the presentation, yeah.
Then it should be in the presentation. So what, what will happen, the town moderator will have, um, it's like a, her, her preview type meeting, and that's where, um, you know, staff or, um, presenters come in and.
Beg.
Beg for how much time you get. So, um, usually, so let's say if it's a, you know, a three slide presentation, just we probably give you four minutes.
Yeah.
Um, and then we ooch from there, so, um, eight has always been the maximum, so, um, for like the PRD, we're going to start with eight. For the two family and accessory dwellings, we'll probably ask for six.
Yeah.
Um, and then the others go down to four.
Yeah.
So that's, that's kind of what staff is going to be shooting for, so.
No, I'm just saying, like, we have this objective spawned where we talk about maintaining neighborhood character, we can build in that somehow, just another bullet point that's right there with that, it would be pretty simple.
Okay.
Doesn't mean we won't get the question, but.
Yeah. All right, does anyone want to move, make a motion on, uh, our recommendation for this one?
Should I do my own?
Why not? He who proposes, proposes.
I make a motion, wait, what is the new number on here now?
Uh, thirty-five.
Thirty-five. I make a motion, uh, that we take affirmative action on.
Or we recommend affirmative.
Recommend affirmative action on, uh, Amendment thirty-five.
Article forty, Article thirty.
Article thirty-five.
As written in the.
As written in the warrant article.
Okay, and, Al, any second on that?
Twenty.
All right, all in favor? Okay. So that moves us to Article thirty-four, there was significant feedback on Article thirty-four. Which is about the planned residential development.
You're not going in order?
Two family dwelling, we just did thirty-three, now we're doing thirty-four, planned residential development.
Okay.
There's numbered differently on this.
It's thirty-five, that's. I'm confused about the numbering.
Yeah, you started with thirty-four.
The numbering in my booklet that I got in the mail is different than the number.
Well, this is the, this is official, this is it.
So that's the numbering you should be.
This is the real numbers, so sorry, so it starts off with thirty-two.
Thirty-two, okay.
That's what we just approved.
Oh, no, thirty-two was first.
No, thirty-two is, uh.
Right, thirty-three is, thirty-three is the second one.
So you just did thirty.
Three.
Instead of numbers?
Thirty-two, so you just did thirty-three.
What did you start with, additional dwelling?
Yeah.
Additional dwelling unit with number thirty-two.
Thirty-two, right.
We're just going to say additional dwelling units, and then you just did two families.
Right, thirty-three.
Okay, thank you.
And now we're moving to Article thirty-four, which is planned residential development and principal use regulations, and so, as I was mentioning, I thought that I received pretty significant feedback in a couple areas. One was in, the, the two kind of most substantive ones were the, um, the size of the dwelling unit that we would consider eligible for, uh, um, bonus density. And that was the twenty-five hundred square feet of gross floor area, which I think is an important qualification of the gross floor area, and I think that I probably need to be prepared to, you know, better prepared to illustrate that. The other, of course, was about the permit granting authority, and, and, uh, I think that, uh, Haley's had given us some additional great feedback there, uh, done some more research, where it has become clear that Concord is the only surrounding community that has the ZBA, approved planned residential developments, every other community uses the planning board. Now, that, we then went to, well, why is that? Because that seems like such a peculiar thing. And it, we've speculated that, uh, one reason is because it allows bonus density, and so therefore, the ZBA gets involved because it's kind of overriding the, the basic rules for the zoning district. But then Haley did some additional research and found that, uh, some of those other bylaws that the planning board as, of those other towns approved, do allow for bonus density, so I think what I will do, I, I have a backup slide that would have a table that would illustrate all those other towns, who the permitting authority would be, and then for each of them, whether or not bonus density is, uh, uh, there's a provision for that in the bylaw. So I think that that will go a long way to justifying the shift beyond the, uh, reasons that we've already given. Those were the two big issues, the others were really clarifications, uh, you know, or questions for folks that didn't read that carefully, I think. And so, yeah.
Matt, I think there, I do recall hearing some comments about, um, a familiar topic to us, which is why not go higher on the open space requirement?
Oh, yeah.
I think that was one of the other ones that kind of went along with the dwelling size. Um, make dwelling size smaller and increase the open space.
Right, and I think that I tried to explain in the hearing that at this stage of the game, we've cast the die on terms of that because we could not raise the open space requirement without going out of the scope of the warrant article. And, um, so I think that, uh, you know, that one, that's the answer as we stand today.
Um, maybe defend it a little bit.
Sure.
I think one of them.
Yeah.
But it's, you know, instead of saying, well, it's.
No, no, well, and indeed, I mean, as we did it there, we said, look, there's a limit to how much of this we can demand, where people just said, oh, the heck with it, we're not going to do this.
Yeah, and I think the other, the other thing I think is worth pointing out is that we want to look at it as a package.
Yeah.
So if somebody's coming in with a really aggressive, um, sustainable building plan, that maybe they have a little less, um, open space, you know, versus, so I think it's just like, keep emphasizing that we want the flexibility, look at the entire package.
But there is still a minimum, but you said the four, yeah.
There is a minimum, for sure, yeah, but, so we're, you know, that's.
It's probably worth also, um, tying the re, redefining of whatland to it as well, because that is effectively closing that, you know, or whatever you want to call it, and making it even more.
More open space requirement, yes.
There, and there was some complete confusion about the way that was written in this, in the slide, which was not easy to digest, do you, do you think it is, um, to me was more of a clarification? That, maybe it's easier to call it a clarification than a change to the way that we're going with it.
Yeah, you mean. Right. Right.
But I don't know if that helps.
Well, I have work to do on the presentation, because I believe it took me fifteen minutes to present, okay? So I have to cut that in half.
Okay.
Okay, and now I could start speaking like an auctioneer, but I, I have a feeling that I'm just going to need to use fewer words. So, um.
Well, so here it gets to your, your previous recommendation, was you're given eight minutes to present.
Lots of backup slides.
But then, yeah, but then as each question comes up, here's your backup slide, so.
Right, and there were a number of provisions for which there really were no questions, and so they could really just go on a list, as opposed to, you know, going through the whole justification of each one, right? So that's what I intend to do, is to really kind of say, well, here they are, anybody, uh, you know, got any issues with these? And, you know, and highlight the ones that I know that people are, are interested in. And then have backup materials on the others in case those questions come up. So that brings me to the question of whether we want to recommend affirmative action on this Article thirty-four as written in the warrant.
Yes.
So I take that as a second, and, uh.
That, that sounded like a motion, Mr. Johnson.
It was a motion, I make a motion that we still, probably just said. And then, um.
That sounded like a second, Kate.
And I second.
That was a second, okay, and all in favor? Okay, so we're through the three biggest ones, now we get to Article thirty-six, uh, relief from parking requirements.
Welcome to thirty-five.
Hammerhead lot.
Hammerhead lot, I don't know, hammerhead lot was so short that it, it just spun right through, so hammerhead lot, there were no questions whatsoever. Brilliantly presented. Uh, so, um.
Go ahead, somebody make a motion.
Yeah.
I believe that, um, we recommend affirmative action on Article thirty-five hammerhead lot. As, as written in the warrant.
I think that's a second.
Okay, all in favor? All right, thirty-six, relief from parking requirements, there was substantial feedback surprisingly on this. I think because the public is not as aware of what we've been doing. And so, you know, what we thought was really just, uh, helping to clarify, ended up seeming to many people as if we were establishing new policy. And so, uh, I think that, uh, there was an interesting question asked, uh, and, and a request that, you know, that, uh, we maybe clarify the wording, and so I think it was around the, the six criteria. So right now, it's not obvious from the wording of the bylaw that not all those criteria necessarily apply to every application. So I think, uh, Steve Carr of Mushroomfield Road suggested to add the words if applicable. So that, that, though, that might be a little tricky, because it says shall include the following criteria if applicable, which sounds almost contradictory. So.
It depends on how, I mean, if, if the following criteria is applicable, if an applicant is presenting their request for relief,
Yeah.
and they're not basing it on the zoning bylaws, parking requirements, then, then that criteria is not applicable, so.
Right, if, of course, to the project. Right.
I, I think, I think the questions were raised, and the presentation can have a little bit more clarification in it on what if applicable means. It means that if somebody's not basing it on.
Yes, okay. A parking study, then we'll look at the other criteria.
You know, just parking study, if, if, you know, somebody already has bicycle parking, but they want relief, they, they're not necessarily going to add more bicycle parking, so I, I think that that can be.
Right. But I do believe that that amendment might be worth adding, rather than just leaving the wording as is, because it doesn't currently say if applicable, right?
Don't we want to see the determination, um, may include?
Well, may include means it's optional.
Yeah, it's not really so.
No, but I mean that the whole thing is optional.
May include any of the, or shall include any of the.
We're going to look down this list.
I know, just sort of, I think as applicable was works, uh.
Yeah.
Oh, after the word each of the following if applicable.
That's right.
Yeah.
So, so I think we should make that change. The other suggested change was around parking studies to add generally accepted parking studies, but I actually don't think for these purposes it's necessary. And the reason is, we will judge whether the parking study was a viable study or not. So I, I don't see the need to make that stipulation. So, um, okay, so then, we, for Article thirty-six, uh, I would move, uh, that we recommend affirmative action on, uh, this Article thirty-six as amended.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. Article thirty-seven, thorough depot business and residency district boundary. There was a little bit of public. There was a little bit of public comment here. I think that, you know, it was clearly because we gave the example of Starbucks, then it became a whole site plan review discussion. And I think that the presentation should just be very upfront about that, hey, this is about the boundary. There will be a site plan review process if they ever move forward with the change. All this is, is about moving the boundary. So I, I think that there's some need to change the presentation. However, I did not hear anything that would make us want to change the article.
Well, how do you explain why you're moving? I mean, it's one thing to just sync up the boundary here in the northeast quadrant on mobile, right?
Yeah.
But I mean, don't you need to explain why you're actually moving the boundary into the residential lot?
I agree. I think that what we did in, in their article up until now was more or less just say that this, you know, this project is coming, isn't this cool? And, you know, here we're moving the boundary. And then everybody went, well, but what about this project? And, and so I think that what we want to just be more explicit about is that what is the review process for that project and how it will follow? That's, that's all that I wanted to say, is that the presentation can address that.
Got it.
You're making the change to allow for potential projects.
Until that happens, there's no reason to have a discussion, yeah.
I also think it will be good to clarify in the presentation that, you know, should the, the boundary, should town meeting allow for the boundary change, that the applicant at that point will then also amend the property boundary so that the thorough business district does not cross into the residential used property.
Yeah. So given all of that, I move that we recommend affirmative action of Article 37 as written.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, Article 38, fairs, bazaars, antique shows, suppers, and dances.
Straight to the motion on that one.
Well, there, there was a comment from the public about what is this philanthropic organization versus an educational organization, but.
Yeah, I mean, I think that was a fair definitional question, actually, so I'm gonna give one.
But I do expect this to go on the consent calendar. Yeah, keep it in your pocket, you might have to pull it out, so.
I can, I can help Haley just develop just one slide. Many, you know, many philanthropic organizations also have an educational component, so, you know, they, there, there could, you know, there could be a mix.
Yeah, I mean, my one general question that I had was like, how, how many three-plus-day events? Because like, under this, they have to be, it only applies to like, three day, three days or greater, right?
So like Oktoberfest by the Lions?
Yeah, over by, uh.
At Beryl Farm.
Okay.
Um, that's a day event. The Concord Museum, two years ago, when they had their summer movie night.
So like, maybe two a year, though, that sounds like.
There's not, there's not many.
It's outdoor, right? It's outside.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so I don't know if it's worth it, like, if it's on the consent calendar, great. But I think the point, though, is, like, these are fairly rare in the first place.
But it's, I don't think it was, I think we need to emphasize that we're talking about outdoor events. Why can't I find that word in here now? But anyways.
All right, so I move that we recommend affirmative action of Article 38 as written.
Second.
All in favor? Okay.
And we should go to the Oktoberfest event.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Article 39, prohibited uses. So Kate, you've got some feedback on this, you got. So any need for adjustments in your presentation, do you think? I actually do think that you're gonna have to present it personally.
I would be delighted to present it. I, I do think that the question, I think it's okay the way it's written.
Okay.
It came down to the way that you interpret a valid registration. I think that that's the way it's written, is the way we want it to be.
So I just wonder if the presentation might address something like that head on, you know? Yeah. Somehow, you know?
Just really quickly, just to digress to your question. For the, for the fairs, it's, it's a three-part thing. No such event shall continue for more than three days. It shall take place with entirely within a building, and police supervision of parking and traffic shall be provided during the event unless the chief says otherwise.
Not at all.
So it's those three things.
Okay.
So a lot of them take place outside.
Wouldn't it just say how to take place in there?
So in all districts, you can, you can do this, provided that it takes place. So I'll, I'll work on you, I'll work with you on the consideration.
And, and maybe the description, or no, it's too late?
No, no, we already got that one. I was gonna do that, the description of education and philanthropic.
No, it's part of the outdoor events. I, I think it's, I'm confused on the outdoor events.
I mean, we've already moved to make it as written, but the.
If, if, if it is, goes longer than three days, if it takes, does not take place entirely within a building, then you need, then you need a special permit.
Yeah, sorry, so it's fairly rare.
Well, those, those are talking about.
Yes.
Yeah, outdoor events.
It is fairly rare.
Okay, so we've just finished through 39.
What'd you do for 39?
Oh, sorry.
So did you, did you think that there was something? Oh, no, you went back to Haley, like, sorry.
Yeah, I just said that I thought that if you, in your presentation, you just addressed this whole registration concept. You know, driveability, registration, all the junk people seem to raise.
Okay, got it.
That, that would probably help.
Easy, yeah.
Okay, so I move that we recommend affirmative action of Article 39 as written.
Good, second.
All in favor? Okay, so now we, we can either move on to the petition articles, or we could wait until our next meeting, it's up to us to, you know, we have time, right?
Since I have Ford Appeals Thursday night, I'd be really happy if you just waited till your next meeting.
Okay, I think we can wait.
You have one to.
Because we have 40, and that's, that's what I think we.
You have five sets of minutes, that if you walk it through, my admin assistant will not be happy.
No, well, neither will the public, by the way, yeah. Because some of them are old at this point. So Gary, let me move to that next agenda item. We will, we will table the rest of these until next meeting. But you're here to tell us about Article 40, and we need to then, as a board, decide whether we want to take a position on it. It's a general bylaw, so there's really no, you know, legal reason that we would have to, but there, we might want to, so.
Do you, do you have access to your email? Because I get emails and slides, I don't know if you can.
What did you email them to me?
Just now, I mean, on the network. So.
Can I plug into an HDMI?
No, you can, you can unplug this one.
Oh, but that's probably not gonna work.
Then just plug that one back in and unplug that one.
Oh, I see. So maybe we could do this in a way.
Yeah, looks like something's happened.
So, yeah, thanks for listening to me twice. Article 40 is in, in a warrant, and right, Matt, it's a general bylaw. Sorry, Garrett Klein, 57 Central Street, speaking again just on behalf of this citizen petition, which is going to be a general bylaw, not a zoning bylaw. But it does have a lot of overlap with elements of the zoning bylaw, or holes in the zoning bylaw, I would say, that as a member, the former member of the planning board, I struggled with, that I think might be helpful to you, those of you who are interested in certain types of development, that zoning bylaw doesn't allow you to consider. So I just wanted to share with you what the petitioners are seeking with this bylaw.
It's not a petition anymore, is it?
Right, you're right. It was originally a petition article, but in speaking with the select board, the select board agreed, I think unanimously.
To put on the word.
Was it unanimous or not?
Yeah.
To sponsor this. So it will, is now a zoning article, or it's not, a general bylaw that will be sponsored by the select board.
But they have not yet taken a position on the article.
Correct. But what it seeks to do is to limit the expansion of natural gas infrastructure in Concord by requiring all new construction, and this is incorrect, no longer requires major renovations to be fossil fuel free. The, the language has been amended in the handout that will be, you know, at town meeting, includes some renovations, sorry, revisions to the bylaw that we'll talk about. I don't think I need to go into the, the risks that climate change presents to this group. Like, you guys are well aware that climate change is an existential crisis. I think what's more relevant is that the town has passed already Article 51, which established goals for the town to come into alignment with Massachusetts state law, the Global Warming Solutions Act, the climate, Paris Climate Accord. But that requires the town to achieve a 25% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions by 2020, and 80% reduction by 2050. Concord has established a strategy for getting there. The Energy Futures Task Force, providing reports to the select board, that established a reliable, equitable, and environmentally sound strategy for that. It assures viability for CMLP, it addresses climate change, it integrates it into the light plant strategy and long range plan, and it promotes intergenerational equity. The goal calls, yeah, I already told you about the call, the goal. The threefold strategy to get there reduces greenhouse gas emissions through energy efficiency, shifting to renewable energy supplies, and to begin electrifying everything, our cars, our homes, and our buildings. CMLP has integrated these goals into their strategic plan. They're pursuing opportunities to meet 100% non-carbon emitting electricity through the purchase of REX. At the end of 2018, Concord had achieved a 56% non-carbon emitting fuel mix, and is well on its way to meeting its goal through the purchase of these REXs. So if we can electrify everything, then once we have decarbonized the electricity, we will be coming into compliance with our goals. So why do we need Article 40? We have this strategy. Well, it's not only the greenhouse gas goals that we're setting out, but also air pollution, and also the other existential threats from fossil fuel usage in the town. There are explosions and, you know, other toxic emissions from fossil fuels as well. But, you know, largely, this is driven by our commitments under Article 51 and climate change. But the real reason for Article 40 is that more than one-third of our greenhouse gas emissions come from natural gas and fuel oil that's used for heat and hot water. So Article 40 is the next logical step in assuring that Concord can get to its mandate to reduce by 80% by 2050. You know, the stuff we're doing on electricity and CMLP will sort of get us to our 2020 goal, but to get to 2050, we really need to tackle this one-third of Concord's greenhouse gas emissions that are coming from buildings. So how do we eliminate greenhouse gas emissions from buildings? Well, that's where building permits and, and, you know, energy codes and special permits and things come in. This first step is targeted at new construction. At least, you know, when you're in a hole, stop digging, right? The first step to get out is to stop digging. So at least new construction should not be adding to our fossil fuel emissions. That's the theory. And so any new construction of a home, commercial building, or structure requiring heat or hot water would not be allowed to use new fossil fuel infrastructure. So that would include if a house is demolished and then rebuilt, that's new construction. We are planning on meeting this Thursday with Ray, the Building Inspection Services.
Building Commissioner Ray Maddy.
Thank you, Building Commissioner Ray Maddy, to talk about, you know, basically, how do we find the simplest way to reduce burden on town staff? The idea is to align this with building permits, you know, what, how do they designate new construction from other construction? Clearly, this relates to some of your bylaws that are being proposed this year, like Article 32. If it's a new accessory dwelling, that would be new construction. So we want to make sure that we can align with his, the building permits that come in, so that it's very easy for him to distinguish what's new construction from not. If it's an existing structure but doesn't have any fossil fuel infrastructure, that would require new fossil fuel infrastructure. So we're still trying to work out some of the things, but we have dropped the elements of this that would have targeted major renovations or, you know, more than 50% of the structure. So that's no longer in the language. So, yeah, allowing new fossil fuel infrastructure commits us to increase air pollution for the next 30 to 50 years, lifespan of these pipes. So limiting it to sources for heat and hot water in new construction seems to be small relative to managing the problem, but it starts us towards the future that we want. Exemptions, important to point out, that affordable housing will not be subject to this. So for example, Junction Village, which would have 100% on the subsidized housing index, would not be subject to this. Use of cookstoves in commercial restaurants, commercial kitchens, would not be subject to this. And fuel pipes that are used exclusively for backup generators would not be subject to this. Some people have asked about other exemptions, but they're examining for things that would not require new construction or fossil fuel infrastructure, right? But like during construction, you know, using LPG tanks for propane heaters during construction. Well, that's not permanent fossil fuel infrastructure anyway, so it doesn't, doesn't apply. And the appeals process, somebody had raised questions about the appeals process. Yes, town manager will identify some entity in town to hear and resolve complaints. He is responsible for determining who that body will be, and enforce the bylaw, and to hear and resolve any complaints. And then finally, you know, we're not alone in proposing this. In fall of 2019, Brookline passed a similar article at their special town meeting. Belmont, Newton, Lexington, and Arlington are all anticipating similar measures. And there are several communities in California that have passed a similar resolution. So it's a small step, but it's joining in concert with other towns and communities around the country. They're moving aggressively towards this kind of target. And we think it's a small step towards what Concord should be doing to align with Article 51 that was passed by majority at town meeting a couple years ago. So I will stop there and see if there's any questions, but, yeah.
I am wondering, so I have a couple, I have a couple of questions about this. I, I don't think it's true that we're on track to meet our 2020 obligations, CMLP, for non-carbon emitting. I think that, and I don't hear that conversation being had anywhere, so I, I feel like, like, a little bit like, that should be the focus of the discussion, is how do we get there? If we need to raise prices, that's what we should do, because that's our commitment. So when I hear, like, the slide that said, well, a third of our greenhouse gas emissions comes from fossil fuels at the building. It implies that by removing that, going to electricity, we're just going to eliminate that source of greenhouse gases versus transferring it somewhere where the electricity is produced. So I often hear when we're having this conversation, it's as if electricity has no greenhouse gas emissions, which is not true. And the other thing that we should consider is, one of the sources, the substantive source of our non-carbon emitting electricity through CMLP is nuclear, is nuclear, which is also controversial at the places where it is generated. So and so I guess that's like my, that's my main point about, that's my main like kinda feeling that I get when I think about this is, it's kinda putting the cart before the horse, like let's green up our electricity supply in a way that we feel good about before we start like mandating these kinds of switches. Uh cause if, uh but the other one is, is I I understand the Brookline by law to be controversial. Um the Attorney General has not ruled on it yet. I think it's gonna be litigated. I would hate to have Concord partially funding a litigation, like but spending hundreds of thousands dollars on litigation that we could be spending on our electricity supply um to get to our goals. Um so my thought is, let's wait a year, like let other people fight this battle, and then move next year. Um so that's what I think, but I I guess the other thing is, um like I'd be so interested to see what the um, like if we made this change, like how many um heating systems would be impacted like in the first three years? And how those emissions are different from taking it from like our, what we think might be our electric uh electricity supply through CMLP versus burning it at the boiler. So I don't know if has anyone ever looked at that and tried to come up with a um a comparison of this is taking it off the grid versus burning fossil fuels at the source, I mean at the consumption point.
Given the the rate of new housing and other building development in town, you're saying?
Right, and acknowledging that there's greenhouse gas emissions from electric.
And the greenhouse gas emissions made around the middle school, so it it well probably wouldn't be affected so much by this.
Yeah, there's a lot in there, a lot of questions.
Yeah.
So I I wanna, so I wanna make sure that um we're um not getting into
Debating the article.
debate of this article and um.
Getting to where do we want to take a position?
And and yeah, and and whether just, you know, the first question is, you know, does, the board generally does not take positions on general, you know, non-zoning articles, whether you know that's, and then um you have two members uh that are missing that I I believe all of you are very um up to speed on this whole topic. So to have two of your members missing when you do discuss whether to take a position or not, I think you know, whether you wanna consider, you wait till the next meeting.
Well, so I think what we should do is take advantage of Gary's presence
Yep.
to get clarifications and 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 questions out to him. I think that I am sympathetic to what Elizabeth is saying, that our deliberation or whether we take a position, first of all, we have time to do that in a subsequent meeting, um and that um it would be good to have the full board.
I'm sorry, I was so excited to have Gary here. I'm so excited to talk about this.
Yeah, and I think you're asking fantastic questions.
If we can't abate it, can Gary tell us a little bit more about like what the connection is to the zoning code?
I mean, I would say, having been a former planning board member and having sat in your seat, I have often been frustrated at the lack of ability to use tools of the zoning by law to address this topic.
Right.
But how is zoning?
Because zoning, you're limited to the stretch energy code. That's it. As long as it's built in.
It's not, it's not.
Right.
So this is a uh.
But isn't that the way that has to be because we can't.
No, but this is a uh tactic to get around that. Yeah.
It's an opportunity for the planning board to take position if they want to, as you know, members of the community to support a general by law outside of zoning that would make your job easier because new building permit applications that come to you would already have a lot of your concerns addressed.
Right.
So one of our problems.
I would, I would like, a recent application where we were trying to find a way to to
Justify it.
suggest that there should be only electric uh appliances used. And we were referring back to the environmental like sentence reference within the the PRD description, which is there, but this would basically remove that, us from even having to do that in the first place.
Well, I guess I don't think that's the business that the planning board should be there. I don't think that we should be regulating.
That's why the select board is sponsoring it, but.
Right, but I'm saying that I don't think that it's related to the material work that the planning board undertakes. So I don't.
It's an opportunity for any board.
I disagree.
Yeah.
Yeah, I understand. That's my position. That is my position. I understand that not everyone shares it, but I I don't think we're.
We're taking that position on Article thirty four for sure, because we're saying that green building design and and you know, low impact development uh you know, are considerations on approving that now.
But we're not regulating energy choice, fuel choice, and appliance choice.
Right.
We're saying that could be part of the package you give that could help sell your projects, which is different than.
That's a reason why we're gonna approve Article.
But this was a recommendation in a very, in an existing application.
Yeah.
But we, you voted to approve that recommendation.
And I think direction, we we have been trying to move that, that
I didn't, I don't, I don't support that. I don't support that. Personally.
direction. I I understand the concern about uh you know, RECs uh and everything. The one thing I would say in support of this relative to to what you're saying is that assuming later on down the road we do come up with a better way to to you know, green up or, for lack of a better term, the electrification system, we are then already in a position where the housing that has been constructed in the interim is now good to go, clean, and it's not like only then are we saying, okay, now let's make these houses, you know, match that and be green.
Which is not feasible economically to, you know.
Right.
Yeah, retrofitting.
Yeah, so so, well, yes, there are, there are issues with the electrification system and RECs. I think this is, you know, one step we can take locally to begin moving in the right direction so that later on down the line, you know, along.
Like can we take a, which, which.
Well, I mean, that's TBD.
That's TBD.
Right, exactly. So are we gonna?
Which each, each, each board member can have their opinion as a citizen and a member of town meeting. Um the question before you tonight
Yes.
is as a planning board, um is this something that as a planning board and what your direction is under the zoning act and under subdivision control law, should, you know, should you be providing your recommendation as a board to town meeting?
Right, so I would say there is a material difference between our recommendation for alternate form of development to that it be a hundred percent electric compared to, the difference between that and saying there shall not be any more non-electric infrastructure. So it is a a higher bar that's being proposed by Article four, a much higher bar in fact. Uh because, you know, frankly, for that application, there was an alternate form of development the developer could pursue, you know, if they chose to. Um so um that said, I I did feel that it was worth coming back here and having Gary talk to us because the uh because we came to that conclusion, and um it did seem as a board, cause I had previously reported to the select board in response to a question uh that, oh, well, we probably wouldn't weigh in on this, cause we don't normally weigh in on 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 general uh bylaws. But um I have meanwhile surveyed various members of the public, attended the mothers out front forum uh dedicated to this topic, and I have kind of encountered a few different objections. And um you know, again, it comes back to the citizen versus a board type of thing. But um it's, I I do feel that as a a planning board we wanna show as much commitment to the town's goals and try to support that effort as much as possible. But the tools that we have, the zoning bylaws, and that's our scope of responsibility um is different from this initiative. And so I think if, as citizens, people will, you know, can support this, that's that's one thing. But then as a board, I don't know, you know, if it's in our our purview. I'm still a little bit um uncertain about that.
Do we know?
Can't we just determine where we?
Yeah, well, I think that that's certainly what we we could do here, but
It could be anything, doesn't have to.
Um but then maybe we should come back to that next, next time.
Sorry, but did you say, could you just say that again?
I mean, I was just saying, theoretically, we could make a recommend, or
We could figure that out right now.
on any, on anything right now.
Yeah.
I I did have one question relating to this specifically. So what was the discussion that went around excluding um like gut renovations? Why, why would we not include that just out, right out front?
Well, I I don't know that we necessarily excluded gut renovations. Part of the discussion that we, it was additions, you know, fifty percent or more. We're still discussing with Ray Matty on Thursday, uh because w- the idea, or the reason we went back is because we wanted to avoid subjectivity in their, making their job more difficult.
Sure.
We don't wanna impose additional burden on town staff, and as permits come in, if there's an easy way for them to clarify. For example, uh you know, my understanding may be that, or it's not my clear understanding, but when you do go all the way to a gut renovation, when you know absolutely you're down to the studs.
Down to the studs, yeah.
And you know, the gas company actually comes in and physically removes the gas meter, uh and you you take out all existing infrastructure, then you are putting back in new infrastructure before they actually come and reinstall a meter. There may be, you know, some clear way to delineate those types of things versus I'm adding a, a, you know, an extra room, and I haven't touched anything, and the meter stays in place the entire time, and you just hook up. So the idea is to simplify the permit application and approval process so that it doesn't put additional burden on inspectional services staff.
I think that sounds great. I just think when you were going through that, it it wasn't immediately clear to me. It seemed like you were excluding those types of renovations, and it was only for purely what, I I mean, maybe it's just we have a new construction, yeah.
Well, purely what, I I mean, there's no way to distinguish them through the permit application process. But our intent is to, you know, basically, if it's new construction,
Yes.
um it would, you know, and and meets that criteria under the permit application process that it would be subject to this.
But one third number is a bit misleading, right? And the, I love this one, and the other slide that uh. Yeah, so this is all existing, basically all existing houses emit one third of the, and we're talking about any new additions, basically.
Right, right. I mean, we're 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 trying to address that problem, and it will, it's to Matt's point, yes.
Right, yes. So but.
We will start to address this problem very slowly over time. So you're absolutely right, we still need to address electricity emissions, and it will go, right, it's commercial, commercial emission.
It's not just houses.
Yeah.
Right, very, 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 very.
But but his point is that we won't start to touch this until the stock, housing stock and commercial building stock turns over. So it's a very small step, and it will build slowly over time, and as I said, the first step is to stop digging.
Yeah, very, very small.
So yes, while we're working on electricity through twenty thirty, we can also take this very small measure. And yes, we still have the entire one hundred percent of the housing stock that will need to be turned over before we actually are eighty percent.
Wait, eliminate that, yeah.
So Gary, so Gary, did Alice or in, uh, do, is or the select board do a legal assessment of like the franchise rights of the gas companies, like the state's rights?
So we're, we're now getting back off track on whether the planning board should be um.
Yeah.
Right.
We've asked a couple of uh
Legal questions.
Yes, we've asked a couple of lawyers in town, and they said, bec- uh if you're talking about the municipal utility, whether this infringes on competitiveness of the utility, and it does not.
Okay.
Municipal utilities specifically don't have uh competitive, they're monopolistic by nature.
So I don't know, so if we take a, if we take a position, what difference does it make? You could say, you know, what, what, is it, is it endorsement?
Just an endorsement.
It's an endorsement so that it's a, something else that the public, uh that town meeting would take into account, just like the select board will take a position on this.
Excellent.
Um we, this would be something optional for us to do if we chose to.
But would also give you a tool that perhaps makes you not as your.
And I, and I think that the other thing is our endorsement, to the extent that it would be, for example, unanimous, would have a big impact. If our, if our position, if it was a split position, I, you know, it either is nullifies any impact or maybe even creates a negative impact on the, on the article, depending on your point of view. So that's.
Can I, can I ask? Would your preference be if you thought that it was not going to be unanimous, that they're not even, go in the first place? Yeah, exactly.
That we just shut up?
I mean, I think support of the planning board in any form is welcome.
I see, okay.
So we wait?
Yeah, I think we should wait till.
Wait till next week.
Yeah.
Good discussion though, and I mean, I I've bitten my time, cause I have so many questions that I've.
Sorry, Matt, and I asked online.
I'm sorry, but I think that Elizabeth is right, that that, there's another time and place.
What is the?
And if you would like to have.
Oh, there've been public forums on this, there's, yeah, there's lots, oh yeah, oh yeah.
Other than. So for the next meeting from the twenty four, Hallie, are you not here?
And if you'd like a representative of the proponents, come back, let us know.
Um, okay, okay. So I'll, I'll have to.
Okay, sounds like we're gonna have a good trip, sure.
Uh but I'm not sure, Kristen might not be here.
You know what it was? I was not gonna be here, but I will now be here.
Oh, you'll be here.
I was gonna say, I thought.
My conference got canceled. Question is, will any of us be here?
The question is, will there be a town meeting?
Yeah, yeah.
So, so Gary, so between now and then, do that rap, show how many, show how, what's the impact?
Show, what is the impact of this? I mean, we know we have to get started sometime, but.
Are you like, that's impossible to do? Or are you like?
No, 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 no. You can do a model for that. That's real straightforward, I think.
Are you like, I do enough for the town, like I'm not.
No.
That would be so interesting to see.
I actually think it would be small. I don't think it's gonna be a big impact. I think this is such a small sample, it's gonna be doing a lot more.
Yeah.
Very small.
It's cumulative, though. It's cumulative.
Because Concord's is, likes to be on the forefront of these things.
Yes, why?
So I'll do that note till we're waiting until the next meeting when all the board members are here.
For, for further discussion.
Yes, we, well, do our deliberations.
This, this slide is very receding when it's complete time.
So you have Kuka Road and then five sets of minutes to get through.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh yeah, I could talk about that hundred fifty foot, hundred fifty two foot long parking spot.
Thank you.
Two minutes.
All right. Okay.
You got the gas card? Um, okay, so um for.
So let's move to the Kuka Road definitive subdivision performance guarantee acceptance. So Elizabeth, give us a little background.
So the um the negotiation on the definitive subdivision plan was settled. And so the developer is now moving forward with meeting all the requirements of their decision. Um and the first requirement before anything else can happen is they need to buy subdivision control law and the board's rules and regs provide a performance guarantee. Um and the applicant, um the developer has selected a restricted covenant which restricts the sale of any of the lots until municipal services and utilities in the road are um constructed um to an adequate level for access to those units.
And there's no performance bond?
Um this is their performance guarantee. It is a restrictive covenant.
Right, but no money's being put up?
No, no. So there's, the developer has the the choice to choose between four different types of performance guarantees by law.
Okay. Okay, I see. All right. All right. Um any discussion? All right, we have this great line.
So so for that to be on your next agenda memo for all of your items, there's your, your highlighted document.
This is, this is, uh, this is staring you right in the face. Anybody wanna take this? Alan? I don't think you've done the duty tonight, so.
Okay, I move to accept the performance guarantee covenant for the Hosmer Meadow definitive subdivision plan, Kuka Road, Concord, Massachusetts. Stated March ten, twenty twenty, from Craig and Hope Beckman for Kuka Road LLC and to authorize the chair, clerk, or town planner to sign the document on behalf of the Concord Planning Board.
Second? All second. Okay, okay. Any discussion? All right, all in favor? Okay, so now we're on to minutes. So comments on minutes. Uh starting with November twelfth. So.
Huh?
Yeah, well, I know, it was a while back, but uh so um that, I actually, there, at the bottom of page two, it says, Mr. Johnson noted a few amendments to his questions regarding the caliper of trees to be removed versus the caliper of trees to be planted that does not make. Um, it says, Mr. Johnson noted a few amendments to his questions regarding the caliper of trees to be removed versus the caliper of trees to be planted, that does not make sense. I think that to the statement, right, that was, to the statement in the minutes. It's something, I, you know, right now, as it's written, I can't really understand that sentence, but what I was trying to say was. That the, um, mi- the original minutes had not correctly, as far as I.
As stated. Um, versus caliper trees to be planted, um, as stated in the minutes, did not make sense.
That's right, that's what I was, there we go, I think that that makes that sentence much clearer.
Correcting minutes in reference to the direction of minutes.
You know, it comes with the territory, right? Okay, I think that was the only substantive comment on that one.
Nice.
December twenty-sixth minutes.
Did you wanna just move in second?
Oh, sure, sure, um, so, anyone? Okay, I'll just say, I move that we accept the minutes of November, uh, twelfth, twenty nineteen, as amended.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, all right, on to December twenty-sixth, Boxing Day meeting. It was a present for everybody on this meeting. Um, so. Any comments about this one? Any, anything? I, I think I had found a wrong word, but it wasn't so bad that it created a problem, I can't remember where it was. It was like. Okay, but anyway, if there are no other comments, any motion to, on this?
I have no motion to accept the minutes of December twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen, as written.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's it.
Anybody? Okay, Alan seconds, all in favor? Okay, uh, January seventh. Um, so this, um, included the discussion of the parking, um. At, uh, one forty-three Strawberry Road, the top of page two says, reducing the size of spaces from nine feet to eighteen feet to eight feet by a hundred and fifty-two feet.
That's a big spot.
It's supposed to be fifteen.
A big rig. Yep, a hundred and fifty-two inches or fifteen feet, two inches?
Fifteen. I think it's fifteen, no, I think it's fifteen feet.
Okay, got it. Um, so that was the, the main thing that I saw there. Any other comments? Going once. Okay, um, so I move that we, um, accept the minutes of the meeting of January seventh, twenty twenty, as amended. Anybody? All in favor? Okay. January twenty-first. Um, so. Uh, this was about the, basically us deliberating finally on the, the two different. Kind of proposals we had there on Strawberry Hill Road, I mean, the Sherbrooke's and, uh, and then out there on Main Street. And then the visualization study. So. Um, any feedback on the discussion there? So, okay, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the minutes of January twenty-first, twenty twenty, as written.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. All right, and then finally, the minutes of February twenty-fifth, our town meeting public hearing. Which we referred to in the discussions of the, um, warrant articles that we have reviewed tonight. Um, any comments on those minutes? I thought they were actually a good summary.
Thank you. We tried very hard on these, cause.
It's a lot of.
Um, no, I, um, you know, I, um, I, I do fairly well typing while it's happening, but then. Um, sometimes just gets faster than me, so Nancy actually goes back some, listens to the tape and, um, corrects everything, so. But I felt it was important that the board had all the detailed questions that you could decide.
Thank you, thank you.
How to move on your presentations.
Sure, having everything on video now is very helpful to them.
It's incredibly helpful, cause sometimes I don't even remember, like I don't get the speaker's name and then by the time the next day comes around, I don't know, remember if it was a man or a woman. Now Nan's gonna at least watch and, you know, so.
Yeah, and you, can you use the transcript feature?
Yes.
It's so cool, okay, um. Then, uh, I move that we approve the minutes of February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty, as written.
Second.
All in favor? All right, so we are caught up.
Great.
Thank you.
Like a book worth of minutes.
So. It was actually reading those minutes, I mean, and I was speed reading and I normally will, like if I see a typo or something, I will. You know, make a notation, I didn't even have time to do that tonight, I, I just said, as long as it, I saw there's two substantive changes, those are the only ones that I. Okay, so. Um. Any liaisons reports? Nobody went to any meetings?
A lot of them are gonna start being canceled, I, um, did the board see that the citizens?
Yeah, after I did all that lobbying for people.
Yeah, I was disappointed. Yeah, and after I responded to the lobbying.
Yeah, so, sorry.
Yeah, well, I, by the way, I really encourage anytime in the future, do it, do it, do it, do it, um.
Well, they do, they do give, and I'll, um, send out the schedule, they do give a lot of those more, um, yearly class type presentations all over the state. Um, throughout the, um, throughout the year, so we'll, so maybe they'll up that if they cancel, cause they, because they canceled it.
We have chances that the ZBA meeting will get canceled for this Thursday.
Um, not that I'm aware of yet, but.
Yeah.
I was just curious, I know that one is probably gonna be the exciting one.
Well, um, so, I went to the Mothers Up Front, uh, forum, as I mentioned earlier. Made a number of comments about the draft as it stood right then, there've been some revisions to the draft since then, so that was interesting. The Article forty. Um, I've been to a number of other town public hearings, et cetera, but those are not liaison reports, so. Anybody else, okay, any staff updates?
Not relevant to the board, but.
Okay.
Okay.
Wow.
We are not on a need-to-know basis for that, apparently.
We need to know more than that.
Closed on my mom's condo on Thursday and she's moving out.
Oh, wow!
Oh, wow, wow, okay.
Yes.
That's a very significant staff update.
It is, yes, nine, nine months.
Yeah, and then, uh, any public comment from the vast audience assembled?
We'll put that in the minutes.
No.
Thank you, Gary, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay, thanks for your presentation, so our meeting is adjourned, thank you.